Thanks. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 10th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call please?
Biersted?
Here.
Bjork?
Here.
Caro?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Morset?
Here.
Odine?
Here.
Page?
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the May 27th meeting and workshop.
I move approval, second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Morset.
Mayor and Council, I move approval of the bills, the amount of $2,117,379.20, subject to the control of review.
Second.
First and second on the bills, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on to public comments. If there's anybody on that says anything like to say, come on up. Everybody's got two minutes. Sign in with your name and address and it's open to public comments.
Good evening, I'm Dana Linscott. I'm the co-founder of the River Falls Alliance for the Homeless. I have two subjects I'd like to speak at about tonight. The least important is that due to the shortage of emergency housing, emergency shelter in River Falls and surrounding area, especially in the middle of winter, we're planning on deploying mobile emergency housing units in River Falls. I'd like to speak to it about, I'd like to speak about that to the Chief of Police, but unfortunately, once the mayor said he had stopped listening to what I was saying, the Chief of Police ceased all communication and ordered those working for him to cease communication with me too. Hopefully, you'll ask him to at least talk to us about this. We'd like to avoid any conflicts if possible. The second is more important. Last year about this time, there was a presentation given by staff about the housing studies and the availability of affordable housing in River Falls. Part of that was there were several hundred units short of subsidized housing, of low-income housing. Since those studies were run, although several hundred are needed, only five units have been built. I believe there's a way to catch up, to build the low-income units that we need in this community. And I'd like to present that to the board, to the council. But unless three of you ask the administrator to allow me to provide a presentation on that, where you can ask questions and I can answer them, I've been essentially banned from presentations to you guys. I can't do it in two minutes, I'll try-
Fifteen seconds.
-but I can't. So, most of you have agreed that low-income affordable housing is badly needed in River Falls. I'd like to present a solution. Hope you will come forward and allow me to do that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything like to, sure?
I would, Mayor.
Yep.
My security camera has shown it, it's real. There is a bear walking around River Falls, so be careful. If you see it out there, growl at it and have it run away. Don't try to run away yourself, but the bear is for real. So unless they've caught it and detained it and moved it away, I don't know. But last I saw it was still running around my neighborhood. That's it.
Thanks.
It's true, it's there.
Yep, yep. Okay, next on the agenda was, there was supposed to be an annual funding update for Merchant McIntyre. We had a workshop on this before the council meeting. So if anybody is interested in seeing this, this will be on our YouTube channel, probably in a day or two, if they'd like to look at it and catch up on that. So next we move on to police radio systems update. Deputy Chief Matt Kenneth will here to provide a presentation for us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight about our public safety communication system. I want to recognize the fact that this is me presenting, however, I did have quite a bit of help throughout this project, including city staff. Newly appointed Fire Chief Justin Wilson kind of got thrown into it almost immediately, responded very well, and I appreciate his help. Also appreciate the help of Police Chief Gordon Young. So I think it's always important to start with some basic terms so that we're all on the same page. You'll hear me refer to a portable. A portable is simply a radio that is carried on the individual person, whether that's an officer or a firefighter. Portables for the police department, we have individual officers that are assigned a specific portable. That portable stays with them throughout their entire shift, throughout the years. That portable can operate for well over a thousand hours a year and is subject to all the environmental conditions that an officer is. So extreme cold, extreme heat, water exposure, those sorts of things. At the fire department, what happens is they receive a page, they come to the fire department, they receive their portable radio, and that portable radio is used throughout the duration of their call. So their call could last 20 minutes, could last several hours. The next type of radio is a mobile radio. So mobile radios are the radios that are simply mounted in some type of public safety vehicle. For us, they are mounted within the main patrol units and two SRO vehicles. For the fire department, they have a mobile radio in each apparatus. The next type of radio component is called a base station. So both the police and fire departments each have a base station. At the fire department, they have it hooked in through some speakers that broadcast the radio traffic to certain areas within the fire department. At the police department, we have speakers throughout our entire building that broadcast, and then we have certain desk sets that are at front office stations and periodically kind of, or are randomly placed throughout the police department in different areas, including the emergency operations center. The next thing you're going to hear me talk about is frequencies. So I'm going to narrow that down to two types of frequencies. One is VHF and the other is 700 or 800 megahertz. Currently, western Wisconsin uses the VHF system. Example of a 700, 800 system would be over in Minnesota. VHF originally was a good plan for western Wisconsin because it's very good at long-distance, open areas, so rural areas, it was a very good system. It could transmit, long distances, be received, no problem. The 700, 800 is actually more of what you need for a suburban or urban environment. So think of buildings, whether inside the building or just around buildings, that radio signal needs to penetrate through those buildings. And the 700, 800 megahertz is much better at that capability. Our current equipment. So at the police department, we have approximately 50 portable radios, 12 mobile radios, again, one base station with the seven desktop controllers. They all operate on VHF. That is the only channel that they can, or the only frequency they can operate on. For us, I could trace most of our radios back to about 2007. And newer, for the fire department, same situation, about 66 portables there, nine mobile radios, the base station, also only operate on VHF. And the equipment actually ranges back to 1993. So we have, between the fire department and the police department, we do have some concerns about the current equipment. Those include age of equipment is the main thing. That affects the rest of these. So performance, battery life, the single-band capability of these radios only being able to broadcast or receive on the VHF band is kind of an older technology. And then interoperability. There are some channels that the dispatch center utilizes that we as the police department actually cannot hear or talk on. The fire department, they're having some issues with not only poor reception, just the same as the police department, but theirs are also experiencing diminished battery life. So the way I like to phrase this is, think about an old cellphone. An old cellphone, your battery dies sooner, you can't continue to update the iOS or the operating system. So eventually that, that phone becomes obsolete in multiple different ways. And that's what's occurring with our radio system right now. I mentioned before too that our current radios only operate on the VHF band. Again, those are known as single-band radios. We have been informed that our dispatch centers in St. Croix and Pierce County both have plans to switch to the 700, 800 megahertz system. St. Croix County has actually provided timeline for this. They are planning on starting the build in about 2027 with a completion in 2029. Pierce County hasn't provided an exact date yet, but it is something that they're reviewing and moving forward on. The equipment request that we have in right now, we requested a quote through NASPRO, which is a National Association of State Procurement Officials, it's a mouthful, from Motorola, for the total amount of 48 portable radios, eight mobile radios, and a base station with seven desk set controllers. Under this quote, the police department have received 28 portable radios and the fire department would receive 20. The only difference between the two is the color. That's literally the only difference. We would also receive the APX 8500 mobile radios and the desktop. It's called a councillet. That's basically the actual radio system and then the desk set. Example of what we would receive is the picture on the right side of the screen. We did consult with not only a consulting group that we've used for radio communication studies in the past, but also with St. Croix County to make sure that these radios meet or exceed the standards that they're looking at, and they, they do. Equipment funding. So the quote from Motorola currently includes a 40% discount on most of the items. The NASPRO contract dictates a 27%, so this is actually a little bit of an increase for a sale that they have going on right now. They've also notified us that effective June 13th, so at the end of this week, that tariff pricing will come into play as well. They anticipate a several percentage increase for every quote out there. So the 40% ends and tariff costs kick into play. The total amount is $480,445.59. The city identified the source of funding as the fund balance through the general fund. That is all I have for you. Didn't want to take up too much of your time, but I'm definitely going to entertain questions.
Thank goodness, Mayor.
Yeah.
So, thank you. I just saw the ambulance go by and it kind of triggered something. We had the EMS board still. They were having trouble communicating with different systems, and I can't remember if, what the exact situation was, but how is our communication both with fire and police when it comes to interacting with EMS? Are they on the same system or are we dealing in?
They're on a different wavelength, I'll call it. Basically, they're operating under Alina's frequency.
Okay.
So they are the private company, they're operating under that. So whenever our dispatch center receives a medical call, they will basically contact Alina's dispatch-
Yeah.
-and then Alina's dispatch sends them out. So we can't communicate with them. We, if we need an ETA update, we actually have to ask Pierce County for an update from Alina.
Would any of these changes change that or is that still going to be the situation?
I believe it could. I have not been able to 100% make sure of that, just because they are operating on Alina's frequency.
I understand.
So we would be kind of encroaching on their frequency.
Okay. And then a question I asked you earlier, just to want to just get it out in the public is, have we, are we starting to see an increasing number of situations where the radios are not working properly in different parts of town because of either coverage or those types of situations? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, so we operate on three main channels, one of which is the city channel, then Pierce County and St. Croix County. Our city channel is starting to become a channel that we just don't use very often. It's very difficult to get reception on. It does not work well within buildings, it does not work well within downtown area. There have been situations where the Pierce County Dispatch Center or St. Croix County Dispatch Center has been trying to reach an officer and they just don't receive anything. So on a digital signal, which is what they operate on, you either have a signal or you just don't. And so you won't hear static. The fire department operates more on an analog system and so does our city channel. So that, whenever it starts to diminish, you'll hear static at least and you'll know something is happening, but you won't be able to hear what it is. On the digital channels from the counties, we don't hear a single thing. And there have been circumstances where dispatch centers have been trying to reach officers, or officers have been trying to communicate out and we don't hear a thing.
Alright.
So what do you do?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, it's kind of my question, I mean, while you're going through this transition, until everybody gets on the same system, are you going to carry around two portables? You know, I mean, how are you guys going to keep things coordinated?
Right, so within the new radio system, these radios are what are called a dual-band system. I'm sorry, I should have touched on this. It's a dual-band system. So it will operate on a VHF frequency or the 700, 800. So no matter what the timeline is for either county, even if one county switches to one band and the other county is still on VHF, we'll be able to communicate with everybody.
Okay.
I thought they'd have a solution.
So that's my concern is, you know, potential incompatibility between Pierce County and St. Croix County. What would you encourage both counties to do that, so that they can work together as far as having a plan in the future?
I don't know if it's exactly my place. We're a stakeholder within the radio system, but radios, as you can see, are very expensive. And they operate the actual radio system with the towers, the infrastructure, everything. So, you know, I think that the best thing that they can do is move to the 700, 800, which is something they're already planning on doing. So we would just partner with them to make sure that everybody has the same type of equipment so that everybody can hear exactly what's going on and increase not only safety to the public, but also to our personnel.
Appreciate that, thank you.
We've had discussions with both counties on this subject too. Haven't we Scott?
Yeah, the counties several years ago commissioned a study which encouraged them to proceed with a joint 911 dispatch center, which they both said that's a nice study and went on their way. So we're still dealing with the fallout of that, which is, both counties are gearing up to fully staff PSAPS, which is, or Public Safety Answering Points, which is their prerogative, their policy decision to make. But of course, we are working both counties and dealing with, with that. So that, I mean, I'd say there's a higher cost for us to operate than other agencies because of that. My understanding from speaking with the county administrator in St. Croix County is they've got in their capital improvement plan about $10 million, starting in 2027. So it's a two-year, $10 million project. As Deputy Chief Kennedy indicated, they're, they're talking about tower replacements, physical tower replacements. In case like our tow, the county tower that's on Whitetail, they're not going to have to physically replace the tower, but they're going to replace all the equipment that they just put up there, I don't know how many years ago, so it doesn't seem like it was that long ago. So at the time they were going to go VHF, they've made similar analysis, I guess, as to what we've had, which is the 700, 800 is probably the way to go forward. And so they're going to do that. And I'm, at least the county board through their CIP processes indicated a commitment. Pierce County, we've not been able to nail down yet on what they're doing, but our understanding is they're likely moving that direction too, in part because of their interoperability with, with the agencies just across the river. And then Wisconsin is a whole nother story. I mean, there's been a, I can't, is it called, can't remember.
WISCOM?
WISCOM. There's been plans and studies for quite a long time to switch the whole state onto a certain system and with little or no progress made, so, which is an issue for State Patrol, working with us, working with the Minnesota State Patrol. People should understand that the dedicated public service professionals we have are making things work. They work around the incompatibility, they work around that with the PSAPS. So they're, you know, public safety is, is being maintained, but certainly not at the most efficient way possible. It's putting extra strain and effort on the officers and firefighters and, and that, to do that. So we understand that this is, this is a unique agenda item. I'll remind the council that official action may be taken on any agenda item, which is posted right on our agenda. I think it's likely that I could authorize this purchase without council and then after the fact, get your authorization. But we thought it would be better, given what we think is the pricing window, to get a presentation in front of you, make sure there wasn't any objections, understanding that you've already said this is priority, legislative priority, we've got the plan and CIP. These are things you've approved parts of this all along. We're saying at this point, it makes sense for us to use general fund balance for a one-time purchase of radios that will essentially take care of the, the, most of the portables, almost all of the portables for police, with the exception of reserve officers. It will take care of about one-half or 40% of the need in the fire department. And because of the way they do radios, you know, you know, most of your first 20 responders or whatever took call are going to have that updated equipment by and large. And so that gets us a really good start. It keeps the legislative stuff cooking. We're still working on getting that, but we're also going to have, as you recall, we're going to have tower infrastructure, we're going to have other things that we have to pay for in addition to these radios. So we think of a simple, if the council's comfortable, a simple resolution, authorize, authorizing us to move forward would make sense. I believe that's an order, City Attorney, to do so.
Correct. I mean, this, this has been budgeted and I think you could likely just purchase these as the city administrators have this budgeted. But given the cost, do you think it would be prudent to have approval from the council to move forward?
And I also wanted to just remind you that you add, when you did the fund balance policy, we have a 40% minimum, a 50% target. And then the councils indicated that when the fund balance goes above 50%, essentially that the city administrator should be looking for ways to reasonably and responsibly spend that money to get closer to the 50%. In the past, we've done a lot of debt reduction. We've paid down debt early. Right now, that's probably not our best, in my mind, it's not our best approach, interest rate-wise. And this seems like, this has been an urgent need, one that we've missed a couple funding cycles now from the federal. And it's, it's, we had money in '25 and '26 to do these replacements in the CIP. And so I'd like the council to move forward and understand that we are, we are moving forward with the general fund, fund balance, which I don't have any concern about our ability to do that because we're still well over the 50% fund balance. So are we looking for some sort of reaffirmation motion here or what? Yeah, I think a simple resolution authorizing the city administrator to, to move forward with the purchase of the radio equipment as presented is, is adequate.
So moot.
I'll second.
Alright. First and second on that, any other questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Police Chief, or Deputy Chief, sorry.
Geez, don't tell Gordy I said that.
Yeah.
So will you get those ordered this week then?
Okay, perfect.
May I make a comment?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank cities, thank the police department and city staff for keeping on track of this and finding, you know, finding a sale just like the rest of us, making our money go further. We appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, next we're going to have a strategic initiative update. This will be about a preliminary, preliminary analysis and preparation for the Main Street Corridor Plan. This will be with our Assistant Community Development Director Emily Shively and our city engineer Todd Nikleski. And they're going to give us a little presentation on this and we'll have some questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Shively, Assistant Director of Community Development, and I'm here with Todd Nikleski, our city engineer, to give an update on the preliminary analysis and preparation for the Main Street Corridor Plan. Our presentation will cover the background of the strategic initiative, plans and policies related to downtown, infrastructure inventory and analysis, and the project approach and funding strategy, and then finally next steps. So this item was designated as a council strategic initiative following the completion of the Focus River Falls plans, which included an update to the comprehensive plan, outdoor recreation plan, and bicycle and pedestrian plan. Main Street has always been a significant priority, but those plans needed to be completed before a focused planning effort in this area could commence. In the 2023 to 2025 timeframe, there have also been other priorities as well, such as infrastructure construction at Man Valley, construction of the biosolids facility, and reconstruction of Lawson Lane, that meant a full planning effort could not be undertaken. However, the council directed staff to proceed with gathering information about the current state of infrastructure in the downtown area to serve as the foundation for any plan or project moving forward. Our work has included a review of existing policies and plans, an inventory of the current condition of public infrastructure, an early evaluation of project approaches, and identification of potential funding sources. We've also been able to utilize consultants for a small area study around Division at Main and Second Street, and have secured a grant to study roadway safety. We will now summarize our funding in each of those areas, our findings in each of those areas. So the community has completed several significant planning processes related to the Main Street Corridor and downtown, including the downtown design plan, which led to the adoption of the downtown overlay zoning district standards, the Kenny Corridor Plan that explored land use and circulation adjacent to a restored river corridor, and the Focus River Falls plans that were adopted in spring of 2023. The key takeaways from these plans related to the downtown area is that downtown is the center of gravity for the community. It's a key location that gives the city a sense of place and identity where people gather, obtain goods and services, and connect with one another. There are opportunities to enhance connections between downtown and the river, improve safety for all modes of transportation, and continue to provide quality public services with the infrastructure systems that support the downtown area. So in terms of understanding the key elements of downtown and what people value, and adopting regulations to accomplish community goals, we have a good foundation from a higher-level planning perspective with these existing plans and policies that are already in place. Before undertaking any further public engagement and plan-making, we need to have an idea of when and how much project funding might be available, a sense of the project's scope, and when a project would happen so that engagement is timely and relevant. In order to figure out the potential funding needs and a general project scope, staff has been zooming in to a greater level of detail to understand the current status of public infrastructure in the downtown area. One of the areas we sought more understanding of is the area around Division Street near Main and Second. We were particularly interested in the existing and potential circulation patterns in the area and how land use and open spaces are ranged. We had heard from St. Bridget's Church and School that at one point they were exploring potential changes to their campus, and a potential roundabout has long been discussed at the intersection of Division and Second Street. To understand these issues and opportunities in the area, we engaged a team of planners, landscape architects, architects, and engineers to study potential alignments of roadways and the impact and opportunities that a change in the- to study potential alignments of roadways and the impact and opportunities that a change in the circulation patterns might have, and met with stakeholders from the library, St. B's, and Main Street Dental to get their perspective on the area. The team provided a high-level analysis of land use, circulation, and parks and open space along the Main Street Corridor, and then did a series of studies of how changing the framework of roadways could affect land use and open space in the area. Want to emphasize that these are high-level studies that simply start to show the impact and opportunities for various alternatives, whether that is a stronger connection between Division and Union Street, or creating more of a large block uh, without a roadway bisecting it, and how connections to open space could be enhanced. What we learned through this effort is that there are some creative solutions that could be further explored depending on what adjacent property owners want to pursue, and what might be possible along the river corridor, and the pros and cons of extending Second Street more formally to Union Street. I will now hand it off to Todd to talk about the Safe Streets Project and infrastructure analysis.
Okay, thank you, Emily, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting us, uh, present to you tonight. Um, before we start talking about infrastructure analysis, we did wanna give you a brief update on the Safe Streets and Roads for All program the city is, is working in, uh, with the help of Merchant McIntyre. As you're aware, after the twenty-twenty-three City Council Resolution towards Vision Zero, uh, we applied for and were awarded a Safe Streets for All Action Planning Grant for two-hundred thousand dollars. And what that does is makes us eligible for some future federal funding. Well, I think, hopefully, does identify safety improvements to a roadway ne- network, then develops a, um, safety network for our roadway, identifies projects, more important, most importantly, allows us to be eligible for funding for demonstration projects and for, um, ultimately, an implementation project. Merchant McIntyre talked about the demonstration project. Uh, that grant is due shortly, so we're kind of working furiously on it. We, we anticipate having three major requests for that grant. Task one will be a traffic signal study. So we have, um, eight traffic signals in town, uh, nine, if you count Cemetery Road and South Main, that's technically owned by the DOT, and we, so we have some shared responsibilities there. But for our eight traffic signals, what we are going to request is some, some funding to prepare a study that identifies signal timing, reviews signal timing, traffic flow, and volumes at those intersections, and if we can modify timing or phasing to improve traffic flow and improve pedestrian safety at those intersections. Our communities, our Main Street average daily traffic volumes have actually slightly decreased over the years because of the, the highway bypass, but now we're starting to see some growth again. And it is a good practice, it's a best practice to review signal timing every three years, and to my knowledge, we have not done it in that timeframe. Task two, to be funded by the demonstration grant, is to study temporary roadway interventions that may improve safety. Discussions with Deputy Chief Kennett and other police officers have identified some potential, um, areas of concern as North Main Street, um, due to some, what we feel could be distracted driving, and then the Cascade and South Main Street intersection, primarily because it's difficult for pedestrians to navigate because it's huge. We remember that intersection was built to support Highway twenty-nine and Highway thirty-five, and it still exists the way the DOT built it for all that traffic, which is really no longer how we use it. I'm gonna kind of briefly talk about what we do with data. Every crash data, every crash that has been reported since two thousand and one is available via the state's repository. And what you're looking at on the left side of the screen here is fatalities in red, A injuries in tan, B injuries in yellow, and C injuries in blue for the left main, North Main Street Corridor. Actually turned off the property damage, crashes because there was so many of them, but fatalities, um, you know, every fatality is a tragedy. Thankfully, there are none in this segment of our roadway system. Injury As are injuries that were really serious. The, the term is incapacitated, so somebody, um, broke a leg, or there was a crush injury, or something really significant. They're going to the hospital, their, their lives are, their lives are changed. B injuries are minor injuries, that might be a, a laceration, or bruising, or something minor, they might go to the hospital, but they'll go home and they'll, they'll, they will recover fully. Um, C injuries, possible injury, probably not, probably didn't go to the hospital. And then, as I mentioned, blues are, I'm sorry, greens are property damage, so those are, those are fender benders. If you look at the North Main Corridor, I did turn off the greens because if they're on, you can't really see anything else. But in the past, and, and I think this data, I turned it on from twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty-four, and you can see four, four A injuries, which are si- serious injuries. Uh, there are a handful more of B injuries, which could become serious injuries, and then a whole bunch of blue injuries. We may attribute some of this to distracted driving, we, we don't know. But this is the, the data that traffic engineers design roadway interventions from. And similarly, at the Cascade and South Main Street intersection, there's one A injury that was a, I think, a broken leg, if I, if I remember reading the crash report accurately. Three blues, three yellows, and a whole bunch of greens again. I did turn greens on, on this one because it's a small area, you can actually see what's going on there. So that was, that was a summary of task two in the two areas that we would like to identify for potential safety interventions paid for by a Safe Streets for All Demonstration Grant. Task three of the demonstration grant, and I'm learning about this, uh, a- as we go, but most modern cars out on the road are tracking speed, location, and what really is interesting to me, they're tracking G-forces. That's how like, you hear GM's OnStar system can call nine-one-one. They know if a vehicle experienced a significant G-force, it probably wasn't an accident, so it automatically dialed nine-one-one. It doesn't just track like when you went in, when you got in an accident, but some vehicles will track like when you brake really, really hard. So maybe you braked really, really hard, and you did not hit that pedestrian, you did not hit that car in front of you. By purchasing a subscription of this data, this gives us the possibility of using leading data to track crashes instead of lagging data, so we can be a little bit more proactive and frankly, have more data points and do something before somebody gets hurt. Again, this is somewhat newer data and newer data that's available to municipalities. So it might be a great opportunity to use a, use a grant to, to get that information. And we kind of wanted to talk about the Safe Streets for All program before we started talking about the actual downtown project, because what we learned from the Safe Streets Action Plan and potential, potential future Safe Streets Grants will be implemented into new roadway design. And as you heard Merchant McIntyre say, there is a potential for Safe Streets for All Implementation Funding in twenty-twenty-six. I do want to point out that this project overview, this is, this is the big swing. We figure it makes sense to take the big swing and scale down the project accordingly to match funding opportunities. But with the big swing, we would look at downtown from Division to Cascade and include Main Street, Second Street, all of the hundred blocks, the one-hundred-block alley, so between Main Street and Second Street, and the Riverwalk. And this project will touch all aspects of our infrastructure downtown, so we will be touching sanitary sewer, water main, electric utility, storm sewer, roadways, and traffic signals, um, of which there are four in our project area. So we'll talk about the underground utilities first. We'll talk water and sewer first cuz they're the deepest, and then we'll grow. Our sanitary sewer is eighty years old. We believe it was installed around nineteen forty. Uh, it generally consists of clay tile pipe. There have been some areas that have been replaced with modern PVC plastic pipe. In general, the majority of it is clay pipe, clay tile pipe, which can remain structurally sound for a really long time, some of it still is. So although we would plan to replace all of the sanitary sewer with new, we would evaluate if there is a potential to reline some of the sanitary sewer with, keared-in-place plastic pipe, which is what we do elsewhere in the city for these older plastic pipes. Um, it's a lot less invasive and a lot cheaper than replacing a pipe. One of the challenges to relining a pipe is that, especially on Main Street, we have several instances where, um, businesses share a service, so that what I, and what I mean by that is if business A is next to business B, they each have a pipe leaving their, their business, they combine into one pipe before it hits the main. The utility does not own the laterals, the businesses, the, the property owners own the laterals. So we get into a lot of situations where, uh, maybe business A has a restaurant with, uh, grease trap problem that causes some plugging in a lateral that then causes, um, a sewage backup in business B, which is really a terrible situation, um, but it, it does happen. Um, and we have some, several documented, um, instances of that happening. Um, and I also want to point out that Walnut Street, uh, there is a, actually not super old pipe underneath Walnut Street. I think it was installed around two thousand, um, and it's, so it's, in terms of municipal, municipal infrastructure, it's pretty modern. But Walnut Street is the interceptor sewer that carries all of the wastewater from, um, new developments on the east side of the city, so, um, Highview, um, Boulder Ridge, they're, they're, they all drain underneath Walnut Street before making their way to the wastewater treatment plant. So when we do this project, we will have to look at future development plans in that sewer shed to make sure that if we need to upsize that pipe for year twenty-fifty or twenty-forty-five, we do it now instead of digging up the roadway, um, that may not otherwise need digging up. So we can move on to the water main. The water main is older. We believe the water main was installed somewhere between years eighteen ninety-four and, uh, nineteen hundred. So we're pretty confident that it's over a hundred and twenty years old. Utility Director, if I, if I misspeak, please, please correct me. But that, that's to our best information when it was installed. The water main on, in all the downtown area, uh, Main Street, Second Street, and the hundred blocks, it's all four-inch or six-inch water main, which is, was probably amazing back in nineteen hundred, but now it's undersized from a fire flow capacity point of view. And the majority of the shut-off valves, so when I say shut-off valve, I'll, I might interchange that with curb stop, that's the individual valve to turn a business off. Most of those, and we think there's around a hundred of them, most of those have failed, so we do not have the ability to turn water off to individual businesses downtown. So if there's a massive plumbing break in the downtown business, we have to shut the whole segment of water main off so they can fix their plumbing, and then we can go back and turn it on. So not only is it really bad for the business that has the water main problem, but it's bad for every business because they're out of water during that repair time, which could be, could be significant depending on the, um, depending on the repair. We also know that old water mains such as this, uh, likely contains leaded service lines. We are working to discover what all of our materials are. We have to have, by year twenty-twenty-seven, we have to, um, we have to know wh- if we have leaded service lines and have a plan in place to replace them. And just as an example of our water main, um, which is really impressive when you think about, there's this water main that is this old, and it still works, like, it still works pretty well. But there are, we are starting to see some failures. Twenty-twenty-four, we were, our water utility was exercising valves, so by exercising valves, I mean, we go out and spin a valve, make sure it closes, make sure it opens, make sure it works. We spun a valve at Main and Elm Street, and it stopped working, and so we, we, we caused a water main leak. So we, we had to go fix it, and this, we total excavating, dug the hole, this is what the water main looked like, and this is, it's really kind of cool, this is the first, this picture was the first time anybody saw this since they buried it in eighteen ninety-four or whatever. And then, you know, after it got cleaned up, it, it ended up looking like this. So, um, Dean's team with our wastewater server, then he, he saved this kind of as a museum piece down at our wastewater treatment plant. If you ever want to go look at it, it's pretty cool. This was the first, like, major failure we've had on that system. But knowing how bell curves work, we'll have more, and they will be more frequent. The, the water system downtown is, is in need of replacement and is becoming more of a, more of a need than a want. Also, the electric utility, um, electric utility is quite robust downtown. But as with any overhead electric, uh, we, we would love to underground it. Underground electric lines, as we're aware, are less accept, less susceptible to damage due to, um, weather events and do result in a more resilient and reliable, uh, electric system with, with less outages. I do want to point out that, so here's the Riverwalk, you can see the overhead electric. This is the one-hundred-block alley between Main and Second. These are, these are our poles, you can see our transformers on top, you can see our primary electric services, uh, secondary services to each building, um, but there's a lot of other people's stuff hanging off these poles, so it's not a simple matter of just directionally drilling a conduit underneath the pavement and moving it down. It's a pretty massive coordination effort between us and probably four or five different, uh, communications utilities. Then, of course, we have storm sewer, main, second, all the side streets, um, the alley. The storm sewer that's not in Main Street might actually be hydraulically okay. Uh, there may be some necessary repairs to catch basins, or replacements to catch basins. Some of it may be okay, and we would, if it's concrete pipe in good condition, we would, we would try to keep it as much as possible. Storm sewer in Main Street, however, is in the center median, which is not a problem, except also in the center median and at about eight feet below the storm sewer is sanitary sewer. That probably wasn't acceptable installation practice when it was installed. It's not ideal today, um, and it's not ideal because if you ever have to get to the sanitary sewer to make an emergency repair, you're digging through the storm sewer first. But it's also not ideal because storm sewer, um, it's not designed to construct to the same watertight standards as a sanitary sewer. We call storm sewer installation dirt tight, um, sanitary sewer watertight. Storm sewer leaks, um, and we, it's not ideal to have storm water leaking down around your sanitary sewer and causing future, um, inflow issues, so we're treating, you know, we don't want to accept that storm water intrigued at the storage treatment plant. So Main Street storm sewer will need to be replaced mostly, mostly completely. And additionally, Main Street, that storm sewer system was all installed prior to our current city stormwater ordinance that does require rate control and, um, water quality improvements. So we would take into consideration that and, and try to implement some, some best practices to do a better job treating storm water. And this is probably the most glaringly obvious deficiency on Main Street. There are, I mean, our pavement is pretty heavily deteriorated. Our public works crews take great pride in doing a great job removing snow, and Main Street continues to get more and more challenging every year. Uh, this photo here, it's not- This photo here, it's not super obvious, but you can kind of see the, the ruts that have been forming over the years. Those, those ruts, you know, that's asphalt pavement. Asphalt is considered a flexible paving surface. So those ruts are really most likely representative of failed base below the asphalt pavement. And to zoom in on the actual problem, our Public Works lead, Charles Larson, offered to model for us. We did not have a long enough straight edge to actually measure to go all the way across the rut. But you can kind of, kind of tell that those ruts, which probably five years ago maybe would have been visible, like maybe a half inch. They're, I mean, two or three, maybe even more inches deep and they're gonna continue to get worse. Ash trees, we've had a lot of conversations about ash trees. We do know that the center median ash trees in Main Street, they are, they're infected. They have been treated. They were treated in twenty twenty-four, most recently. It's a biannual treatment protocol, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at them again in twenty twenty-six and determine if it's worth it to keep treating them. And nobody really knows how long they'll last, but we do know that before they die and fall over on their own, we're gonna need to cut them down. So we can, we can think maybe three to five years until we're, we're removing ash trees. But again, that's, I'm not a biologist and I'm not sure biologists would even give you an exact date or removal range. But it's in the future. It's, it's coming. And as part of the, the roadway improvements for downtown, we would review ADA accessibility. Probably never get one hundred percent ADA compliant, but we get as close as we can. And then as part of any downtown project, we would review parking needs, what's there, what we can provide. And then I'm not going to talk too much about it because I think I talked too much earlier, but traffic signals. We have four of them in the downtown, downtown area, Division Maple, Walnut Cascade. I do want to point out that they are, they're still, you know, they're, they're remarkable pieces of engineering there. I mean, what they do every day, day in, day out is just work. We have, I could probably, I think I've been here four years and I can count on one hand how many times they've failed, which is pretty good considering they're on twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. But our equipment is older. Some parts are becoming obsolete. The most recent traffic signal failure was at Cascade in South Main. And that, we were told by our sig, traffic signal electrical, electrical contractor that, that equipment, if it fails, we're looking on the used market to replace parts on it. Not that, it's not available, but it's just kind of a, a sign of the times that it's really old. It was installed by the DOT way back when, not, not us. We inherited the system when we, when we took jurisdictional control of that roadway. And there is newer technology that can improve traffic flow and pedestrian safety with traffic lights. And I touched on it a little bit earlier, but newer, newer technology has cameras. There's talk of AI adjusting signal timing and phasing on the fly in, in, in a manner that we can't do now with just our magnetic loop detectors. So how do we do it? I mean, this is again, this is the big swing. One of the biggest challenges that we will have to complete this work will be maintaining access and continuity for downtown businesses. So we would probably look at a phased approach to the project. Phase one would be Second Street intersection improvements at Second and Division Street to keep traffic flowing in the side streets. And we want to make, we want to do an appropriate role. We can do Second Street first so that when Main Street is partially closed or closed for construction, we can safely move traffic through the city and get traffic to businesses down that would normally access from Main Street. Phase two, and again, this would be the big swing. But phase two would likely include alley improvements on the Riverwalk and the Hundred Block Alley. And the biggest part of that project would be undergrounding of the existing electric infrastructure. And undergrounding the electric infrastructure is very good for the electrical distribution system. But it also opens up opportunities for improved flow and parking in the, in the parking lots and the alleys like between Maple and Elm Street. And that, that's where if we chose to, we could also tack on the Riverwalk project. Undergrounding that one will, honestly, that one, that one's going to be a nightmare too. But if we, if we want to reconstruct the Riverwalk, that, that will be probably a requirement. And then phase three, of course, i- is Main Street. Even though we will be setting it up to make it as easy as possible for businesses to continue to serve their customers, it's going to be hard. We're, we're gonna have deep holes in Main Street. And there isn't a lot that we can do about it, except plan ahead, try to foresee problems that we expect to encounter and, and have contingency plans to, to deal with them. So, next steps. Safe Streets for All Demonstration Grant Application, that's coming soon with those three tasks that I talked about. Council will review the twenty, I'm saying twenty thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two-ish years, plans that we would, we could potentially do this project, which is also very funding dependent. Tristan mentioned that the Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development, that's the first time I've said that. The Build Grant is a likely, very good, the most likely pathway to funding the project. But another potential opportunity is a Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant, which we would try for sometime in twenty twenty-six.
So in conclusion, staff is recommending moving ahead with pursuing funding opportunities. These programs provide flexibility in that once awarded, there is time to engage with stakeholders through the project design phase with a clear timeline that has more certainty so that businesses, property owners in the community can have a voice, understand what to expect and plan and prepare for what could be a long-term significant project for the city. And with that, we'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions? Preliminary questions or anything?
I have a question. And I guess this, you know, considering it's the Main Street Corridor Plan, I like the idea of including, and I know I've heard other council members talk about this too, dark sky legislation and design elements in the, in preparation for the Main Street Corridor Plan. And dark sky legislation works by regulating outdoor lighting to minimize light pollution, primarily through the use of shielded light fixtures and other measures, limiting the amount of light emitted upward and restricting glare. When, when you do stuff like this, which is really good for communities, it's good for people's mental health, it's good to promote the downtown. It's cost effective when it's done correctly. And it also is good for migratory birds and your pollinators. So it's a really nice design element that would be good for our city to include in this. I would like this to be considered in the review process, so it might get some funding that we're talking about if possible. So with that, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
I know this is impossible to answer, but I didn't see any dollar amounts for anything.
That was somewhat intentional. We, we've done some really preliminary cost estimates and I, I'll, I'll tell you what they are. But there, there, there's a plus or minus range of say maybe twenty-five percent. And I'm, I'm looking, you know, and looking at some inflation between now and say we start construction twenty thirty, we're looking at a, a construction in the high twenty millions. As Tristan mentioned, the Build Grant Award, they, they're limited to twenty-five million, which is kind of why we started with, started with a big swing and.
That's for, that's for all three phases. So now they know what to do.
This night's turned into a pretty expensive night.
Yeah, I just, I just have a comment. I don't believe either of you were here when we redid Cascade through the university. But a, a lot of us were and it involved inaccessibility, a lot of chain link fences and very, very deep trenches. So, so some people in the city have kind of been through this before. So anyway, that, that might help or hurt a little bit.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you. I appreciate these efforts. I own a downtown business right there. And business owners on Main Street can appreciate how things are deteriorating and the opportunities that investment like this presents to their businesses. So as long as you keep pushing along and presenting it as such and you're open with them about the impacts and especially if you give them a timeline way in advance, that'll be very helpful. And I appreciate that the Riverwalk is in it. It's huge as well. Thank you.
So just a couple of comments there for you. So the, the best, most aggressive timeline is likely twenty thirty. So I mean, it's, there's some possibility that we could barnstorm our way to a quicker, you know, day, but we just don't think, given public engagement and, and all the budgets, and this is going to involve, even if we were to be successful in a build grant, it's still going to involve electric, water, sewer, storm sewer. Every one of our utilities has got utility responsibilities under either a regulated or unregulated framework for their rates and what ratepayers should and shouldn't be responsible for. And so we just think that's the earliest it seems even feasible to do. A River Falls good job at something like this. And we haven't, we haven't developed or understood exactly what the council's policy preferences are going to be for paying for it. So we're not making assumptions on your behalf at this point in the project, other than if you can get federal money to cover a hundred percent, you'll gladly accept it. But we understand that there's going to be utility funding required. And, and I don't see any case where that's not going to be required. It's a responsibility of the utilities to maintain that infrastructure. And then we don't, so to squash any rumors about what these secret plans are, there isn't any. So we haven't said we're going to assess the property owners fifty percent of every foot of curb. We have, there isn't that level of detail been developed. That's something that gets developed during the planning efforts. And the community has to make the trade offs. So there may be, there's likely going to be less resources available to us than our ideas or our plans. And so then we're going to have to understand from the council and the community what, what you want to do to, to make those realities. So it may be that the community says we are going to spend two extra million on this particular feature. But we think that feature is a responsibility of the electric utility. Or we want to spend a million on this feature because we think there's good cost benefit. But it's an assessment to the property owners because it's, it's a benefit to those abutting property owners. But to this state, there isn't any of that been developed. There is not a strategy within the walls of City Hall on how to do that. We're in the very preliminary stages of just going, you know, kind of the big cartoon eyeballs of twenty-five to thirty million dollars, saying that's, you know, if we did this from tip to tail, based on what we know about cost, that's what you're talking about. And then you have to work from there. And it may, we may, the community may determine that we haven't swung big enough. That they're saying, well, why aren't you going this many feet down South Main? Why aren't you going, why aren't you including the library? Why aren't, you know, so we'll have to learn that from the community too. But we wanted to give you an update. I thought staff did a great job of doing so. This is kind of where we're at right now. When you have talked to us repeatedly in strategic initiative sessions that we gotta do something about downtown, it's down, it's going to be downtown's turn from what we can tell based on your priorities. This is what we, you've got a really good overview of what we know to date. You've got about a start date that it could start. And then you know a couple of very significant funding strategies to do so. In addition to the two federal funding strategies, once things come in better view, we'll be able to understand what if any state funding strategies are available. I, I think this is not likely to be a project for private foundations and other things to be involved. It's likely to be primarily federal, state or local sources, including a big lift for our utilities. Some, the good news is some of the recent rate increase and rate cases, we've already started to project some of that into those. So we've already provided the Public Service Commission, hey, this is what it's going to cost to do water, water on Main Street. We think we're going to do it in this timeframe and then some of that starts to get planned for in the rate cases. So it's not going to be all new money that we have to try to locate. But I hope that this was helpful for you to understand. The community can have some understanding of what we're doing, but understand the stage we're in is we're not about to appoint a committee. At least that's not what the mayor has told me we're going to do. So we're still doing almost entirely internal staff research. And then at some point, we'll start to determine kind of what kind of focus groups we might want to include in the very initial stages, just on the, on kind of an informal basis. So you, nobody's missed any opportunity to give feedback on this project. We, we have been doing this kind of initial staff stuff to get us in shape to be able to do it.
As we work through all the different scenarios, there's, I'm hoping, going to be some dovetail between the core and the downtown project for some of the things. Stormwater is one that I think would come to mind. But I would hope we're exploring those opportunities.
I, I think realistically, what I know about the feasibility study that we have in the state, we are Army Corps. I think the Army Corps is going out of their way to avoid overlap. Dovetail might be the right way to describe it is kind of here's the edge of our project area and here's the edge of yours. They are not particularly interested in having overlap in their project area in a downtown plan, even though as a community, we see a, you know, downtown means a different thing to us, including the river. So we'll have to see, but I would, I, I would tell you from a practical standpoint right now, the Army Corps is not looking to deal with the thirty-five outfalls going into the river. They're dealing with two or three. The Army Corps is not really concerned or interested in impacts to traffic flows or traffic signal. They're, they're basically saying our job is to get the aquatic ecosystem in good shape. And hopefully you won't screw up everything outside the boundary of the aquatic ecosystem. So I mean, that, just to be fair, we attempted to try to drag them into our bigger downtown project and they politely said, no, thank you. So it's
Well, at least storm water.
We're going to have to be doing a lot. We're trying to make sure that there's no incompatibility with edges, meaning whatever they do for stormwater management, we're still going to have land area and other things that we can do to take care of what we have. Because we're, we're unlikely to build a giant detention basin at Austin's Park to solve the downtown stormwater issue, right? So it's going to have to likely be something we catch at or near the river and treat at or near the corridor. So it's going to have some impacts. At least that's what my understanding is, what, what we're talking about.
The, the, the Kenny Corridor Plan, the, the tentatively selected plan does include some, they call them stormwater detention areas in what would become the, the former lake beds that where treatment would occur from, from our municipal stormwater system.
And certainly there's some overlap on Riverwalk because of the recreation planning that might happen through there. But this is, you know, it's likely a twenty-ish million dollar riverway and a twenty-five, twenty to thirty million dollar downtown. Again, keeping in mind that the scope that we have is what we consider a big swing. But we already understand that there's some folks in the community, they're like, well, why aren't you going west of the river? Why aren't you going south of Cascade? Why? So that'll be determined by the community voices and ultimately the council will kind of determine the scope.
Anybody else have anything? No? Okay. Next, we'll move on. We'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on a resolution discontinuing a portion right away of East Charlotte Street. This is a resolution discontinuing the East Charlotte Street right away between Orange and Sycamore Streets. This discontinuance was initiated on April twenty-second at the same time of approval of the general development plan for the This discontinuance was initiated on April twenty-second at the same time of approval of the general development plan for the Sycamore Two development. If discontinue, if discontinue, the property would be deeded in favor of the developer of the Sycamore Two to enable to propose development. Council will review the final development plans and the specific implementation plan on June twenty-fourth. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and I will take a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the resolution approving the discontinuance of the right of way in the AF Harts addition for Charlotte Street.
Okay. First and second, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Downing, hold on. I I I have a conflict, so I need to be marked as abstained.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I am in favor of this. I'm just curious about some of the language. Um, it says under, uh, be it further resolved, it says no owner of the property abutting the discontinued public way will be damaged by the discontinuance. Under be it further resolved. What does damage by the discontinuous, uh, discontinuance all encompass in its meaning? And that's my question for our city administrator, Mr. Something.
I'm gonna throw that right over to the city attorney.
Yeah, Councilmember Downing, that simply just means that the property still has access to, um, right of way. And seeing as the developer is buying both the north and south properties, um, there's no damage to any adjacent property owner here.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, move on to Comptroller's Report.
Uh, this is the Comptroller's Report for May twenty twenty-five. General fund revenues through the end of May were five million, two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. Or thirty-eight point nine percent of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in May included fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars for building permits. And ten thousand, seven hundred and eighteen for vehicle registration fees. Expenditures through the end of May were four million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Or thirty-six percent of total budget expenditures for the year. So as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, net revenues over expenditures were three hundred and ninety-six dollars, four hundred, three hundred, ninety-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, next, we have administrative report. If anybody has any questions for Scott. Scott, you have anything for us?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I just want to recognize the efforts of the library staff, that I was able to visit the library. Um, they've moved the, if you haven't been there recently, they've moved the. The children's and the young adults area to the lower level. I think they did a pretty good job. We were. Joking that it actually looks pretty good, like that was built for the, uh, for that area, but, um, that's a temporary. Move so that we can, um, not have conflicts between the the renovations that are gonna occur upstairs and the, uh. And the children's summer program in particular, so we'd encourage people, they did a really good job. They moved up, they, with the help of a mover, they they moved that around and. And made it pretty homey, um, and I think it gives you different perspective of the gallery space in particular, if you haven't been to the gallery in a while. Um, with the windows exposed on Main Street, it's it's pretty pleasant space, so I appreciate their efforts. And of course, we want to recognize the operations staff who've been. Working hard to get all of the public spaces open and mowed and cleaned up and ready to go, and so they, it, um. A- ask folks, uh, for their appreciation of all the things they've got to do, and they're working as quickly as possible, as safely as possible to get those. Um, those areas open. People notice areas they think need additional attention, they're encouraged to give City Hall a call, and they provide us a. Provide us a location, and we'll certainly take a look at that, um, and understand if the level of service is not meeting, um, the public's expectation, so. Um, we appreciate that.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, next, to move on to, I got some good, I got a couple of good news points for June. Uh, we 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 recently welcomed our newest police officer to the River Falls Police Department. Congratulations to Officer Carly, uh, Fleshhacker, who was born and who was sworn in last Monday during a badging ceremony. And, uh, so welcome to River Falls, Officer. Am I saying that right? Am I saying it right? Okay. Officer Flesh. Fleshhacker? Yeah, I'm sorry. Terrible names. During that celebration at the police department, also, River Falls PD also promoted two officers to Sergeant. Travis Rudesell and Derek Holkenen. Sergeant Rudesell has been with the department since two thousand fourteen, and Sergeant Holkenen joined in two thousand nineteen. We appreciate their leadership and dedication to the community. And the last thing is that the the Glenn Park Pool is now open for the season. It officially opened on June sixth and will be open through late August. Pool hours and more information can be found on the city's website, web- website at rfcd.org. And then I have a couple of appointments I'd like to make. Um, these are, these are all for the library board. I'd like to reappoint Lorraine Davis through July of twenty-eight. Uh, Tiffany Alexander through July of twenty-eight, and Ann Nelson through July of twenty-eight.
Make a motion, we accept the mayor's appointments.
Second. Uh, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.